Good morning. It's 10:01. If you're ready to get started, we'll go ahead and get started. And our patriotic song has been chosen by Ms. Patsy Kicklider. "America the Beautiful." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Chaplain Phillips, would you like to come on up?
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Let's bow our heads. Our Lord of all time and space, with the summer upon us, we have many people looking forward to traveling for their vacations and to reconnect with family and friends. We ask for your help with all the hazards out there on the road and the air and with every mode of transportation that everyone arrives safely and return from their journeys refreshed and renewed. For all journeys, whether they be to faraway places somewhere around the world or even just the journey from the room to apartment, outdoors to enjoy the sunset and then back inside once again. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Laney Cordona, our resident council president, please come on up. Good morning.
I just want to cover some quick highlights for the past month and coming forward. In May, on the 3rd, we had a kind of a monumental event in that Jim Polatsky, the Senior Vice President for Operations from Orlando, where you will hear the terms Florida Community, Florida Communities, Westminster Communities of Florida, or CSS Orlando. Those are all interchangeable in your mind, so keep that. Anyway, he was here to brief the entire resident council on their duties and responsibilities for representing you too, Ms. Shannon and her staff, and to CSS in Orlando. So that was a good place for them to start, especially the new members, because just learning who all the people are and how things are supposed to work is an advantage to the whole council. Also, last month, the tennis court was restripped for pickleball. So now we have regular tennis, senior tennis and pickleball all on the same court. And we're checking to see what the utilization is, but it doesn't appear to be overcrowded at any time. On the 23rd of May, Senior Vice President for Operations, Jim Polatsky was here again with his crew to look over the campus and to evaluate our submissions for the FY '24-'25 capital budget. And he brought along with him the new Vice President of Marketing, Dave Martino. And he met with Ms. Sheri Williams and her staff, and then he met with our marketing committee. And we went over some of the recommendations that they had and what has come to pass. And it looks like we've made some quantum leaps forward based on their recommendations. And so we look to continue that in the future. And we're getting good feedback from the move-ins now. Some of the problems we've had in the past seem to be corrected at this point. In that capital budgets moving forward, there were two things that came up that I think are of interest to you. The first one was, we're looking to upgrade the audio visual in this room to bring it more up to date. As you notice, we have some problems. We've dealt with the lighting, but we've got some other issues that need to be dealt with. Help us make better recordings of events and to be able to have better situations to interface with the TV channels, MyWLife and some other things. But that may be a time and coming, but it is on our wish list. The other one that is both this year and going forward is removal and trimming the trees, especially as we're coming into the hurricane season. This is important all over campus for protection of both life and property. Moving into June, we're in the process of updating the Westminster Residence Handbook. And it's been started, but we're looking to upgrade a few more things in it to make it current. And then we'll get it on MyWLife in final form. At 40 to 60 pages, it's prohibitive to publish that thing in paper. It's just too much cost. But we will try to get it on MyWLife. And also, I'm going to mention a bigger project. June also marks the beginning of the hurricane season and the Wellness Committee, and I don't want to steal any Nurse Peggy's thunder, but the wellness visits are tied in with emergency management. Both those need to know what is going on with your current health situation in terms of what happens if we do have a hurricane and you either stay here or decide to evacuate. A lot of people need to know there are things available, but it's incumbent upon us as independent living residents, a lot of that responsibility falls on us. If you want assistance from Westminster Oaks, you need to do that ahead of time. That includes taking care of your pets. So we need to make sure that you're in that loop. And the subject of the next quarterly meeting, which is the 3rd of July here instead of the town hall, will be emergency management and hurricane preparedness. So I hope you'll attend that one. This Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, the 16th, the boutique is having their annual furniture sale, 2 to 4 in the lower level. Remember, that's our primary source of revenue for the residence council and for you, for those projects that you want done. So we'll ask you to please check that out, see if there's anything of interest to you. And we've had a couple of volunteers to help the ladies in the boutique do that. Monday, the 19th of June, which would ordinarily be the resident council meeting day that afternoon at 1500, has been moved to the 26th. The 19th is a federal holiday, so the resident council meeting will not be on the 3rd Monday. It'll be on the 4th Monday this month. I want to thank Mr. Joe Lamba, sitting down there in the front, for raising the issue again about replacing the computers in the library annex. Hopefully, that'll be done this month. That kind of fell through the crack last year. He reminded the resident council about that. We took it to Ms. Shannon, and she expedited that with the people in Orlando. And it looks like that's what's going to happen. That's good. And I want to remind you, and Sean can shake his head here. A lot of you are not aware that there are eight charging stations for EVs in the parking garage. So before we think about additional parking or additional charging stations, those are completely unutilized at this point. So they are available. And I believe that's by credit card. Is that correct? Yeah, that's by credit card. So there are two on each level, four levels. So there are EV charging stations here on campus. I do not believe they're the high-speed ones, but they do are, I think, both 110 and 220. And if you have questions, you can catch me afterward. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Jeff Bell, would you like to come up? Vicky has given you her time. That's so generous, Vicky. Thank you. Jeff is our Health Services Administrator. Nice to see you.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, everyone. Want to start off by kind of thanking God that I'm not having to base this update around COVID. And that being said, we are COVID-free in the health center. I will give that update. There's been some updates with that as well, obviously, after the discontinuance of the state of emergency. But they've also changed a little bit about how we measure the rates in the town and in the counties. It's now going towards more of a hospital-based criteria on what's judging your community for the level of in our hospital system is low. So that's all good news. But really, I want to take this time to go over some really kind of exciting things that have been happening in the health center over the last few months. One, I'll start with, that we have remained agency-free and continue to be fully staffed on the front lines in the health center with our own individuals, which I can tell you is such a blessing that we are able to teach and train and cultivate and utilize individuals that are invested in our organization and not for somebody else in and out of here and not really having to take the time to get to know the resident population. So it's been a true blessing that we've been able to do that. And we're one of the few in the area, if not the only. And I know the only one within the Westminster organization that has been able to continually stay agency-free. Another really exciting piece of our team, we've added a new Director of Nursing. Rhonda Miller is her name. She's been here about two months, but very, very seasoned as a Director of Nursing. We're privileged that she was able to join our team. She's been a regional Director of Nursing over the years, has hung her license in her hat in many of buildings that she's had to really grind and turn around and has been very, very good at doing so. And she's walking into somewhere that really we need somebody just to take us to that next level. And I'm excited to have her with us for that ride. Next thing I want to talk about is the Joint Commission. So back in March, we had a surveyor come in from the Joint Commission, which was previously called JCO, if anyone's familiar with that terminology. They're a third-party, really partner for us. We invited them to come in. And really, their main goal is to review policies and procedures that we have in place. Not only just the adequacy of those policies and procedures, but also how are we implementing those? And making sure that we're keeping ourselves in check with the policies that Westminster has taken the time to put in place for the betterment of the resident population. And I'm happy to say that we have achieved Joint Commission accreditation, which was in, I believe, late April is when we were approved for the Joint Commission. And what that really means is it's a third set of eyes, really, because our main regulatory agency is still the Agency for Healthcare Administration. But it's another avenue for somebody to come in and help us and ensure that we are doing the things that we said we were going to do and the way we were going to do them. And so they'll be in every three years to ensure that we're continuing to follow those lines. And then the last real thing I wanted to get into, and I've been asked this from multiple people in the community, different organizations, different groups. You know, most recently, I spoke about this at the men's breakfast on Friday. I've spoken in the Health Services Advisory Committee on this, but it has to do with the star rating of the health center. And I know it's not hard to go out there and find on Nursing Home Compare that this facility has been a one-star facility for quite some time. I can assure you, I've been in one-star facilities. I've been in two-star facilities. This is not one of them. It was an unfortunate event, singular event, singular day, singular point in time back in April of 2021, where there was an elopement that happened in the health center. I've read through the citation. Correct, correct. That's what I'm about to get into. Yeah, exactly. They did not run away and get married, although he may have been trying to do that. I don't know. But what that really means is that when the agency came in and they investigated this issue, nobody was harmed, nobody was hurt. Everyone was returned back to the facility. It was more along the lines of that they didn't feel that we appropriately addressed and handled the situation to their liking. And with that, they slapped us with three IJs and I think multiple D-level citations, which I think it came out in total to about 208 points. 208 points makes you a one-star facility overnight. And you're not even close to getting out of it. I believe 72 points right now is the cutoff for a one-star facility. So it was extremely penal. That will hang with us for three years. Every year that we get by, it does drop down a level. So on the initial level, Vicky, is it one-third or one-half of those points count? Excuse me. So in that first year, one-half of those 208 points counted against us. And that's without any other citations. That's without your annual survey, where you may have two or three deficiencies like they did, and they had a great survey. But it did not matter. They're a one-star facility. The next year, it drops down to the second level. Now only a third of those 208 points are counting against you. Don't have to be great at math. Still puts us in a bad spot. Just recently, we've been, obviously, getting past April. That has now dropped down to the third tier, which now is only counting one-sixth of those points for us. We are now a two-star facility. And that is sad because our quality measures and what really goes into assessing whether or not you are properly taking care of residents is a better measure. The quality measure is a better thing to look at when you're judging facilities in the area. Things like pressure ulcers, ADL declines, rehospitalization rates, successfully returning people to their prior living situations. The important things that we do on a day-in and day-out basis is to take care of residents. We will be on the next quarterly update a five-star facility for quality measures, which is a huge accomplishment. Yeah, you can clap. Thank you. Last August, it was a two-star facility. So we've put a lot of work, a two-star facility for quality measures, that is. So we put a lot of work into focusing on those areas. And when you focus on those areas, you have great outcomes and you have great quality care. What that five-star rating will do for us in quality measures is that will give you an additional star in your overall rating. So when that happens, we will be a three-star facility. So obviously, not what we want, not what we want to see on paper. But I can assure you, when you see that number when you're looking on Nursing Home Compare, I would urge you to go look at a five-star facility and then come tour us. And you tell me what you see. Because I can tell you, Vicky, Shannon, everybody's been in a lot of the nursing facilities in this town. And I would stack us up against anybody with the care that we're providing. So what does this mean for all of you in the room that aren't currently residents in the health center? That you can ensure that when you do, one day, if you do, one day need our services, you know that you're going to walk in somewhere that has the quality care that you can expect to get and that you would expect to get and that we're going to help you have the highest level of independence possible and the greatest outcomes possible. So I encourage you, if you have any more questions for me, whether it's on this or anything else, my email is pretty simple. It's jbell@wservices.org. I check them. I return all messages. I return all voice messages. So please contact me if you have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for all the hard work that you and the team have put in to making those great outcomes happen. Really appreciate that. Next is Gail Alexander with our foundation. Good morning. Thank you for the great endowment program, the Beach Boys.
That was fun.
It was awesome. I hope you enjoyed it as much as I did. It was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Tomorrow is D-Day. So we invite you to please honor our World War II veterans by stopping by the newly renovated Wall of Honor area. We have a few remaining World War II vets that live here, including Charlie Nam, Bill Kicklider and Valerie Pound. And so just if you will please take a moment to stop by and honor them and all of our vets here in the new Wall of Honor area that's been enhanced thanks to Ron and Sally McQuade. It's a wonderful place to just stop and visit. It is lovely. So we thank them for that. Anytime, on your own, just stop by Wall of Honor area and take a moment of silence. Congratulations to our seven art show winners. Yay! So they are James Smith, Pat Meredith, Malcolm Johnson, Nancy Smith, Robin Gray, Betty Sittig and myself. So please take a moment. Yes, congratulations. Please take a moment to view the Foundation Art Show. It's on MyWLife under the Foundation tab. And as you're looking at the art show, please pick out a Residence Choice winner, somebody who doesn't already have a ribbon. Please place your vote, bring your ballots back to me. And I'm going to have a really nice prize as a drawing for your participation in that. Lynn and I will host a live art show this Friday from 2 to 4 here in our Maguire Center foyer. There's Lynn back there. Hey, Lynn. So we invite everyone who entered their art into our Foundation Art Show to please bring their pieces. They will be on display. Bring them a little bit earlier. And then everybody's welcome at 2 to come and have a little wine and enjoy the art. So please come for that. What? This Friday, yes. Maguire Center foyer out there from 2 to 4 p.m. Yeah. Thank you for everyone who has supported our Caring for Generations campaign. We greatly appreciate your gifts. Some of you have actually used life insurance and charitable gift annuities. So we thank you for your generosity. And just so you know, life insurance and charitable gift annuities are considered legacy society gifts. And so we thank our new Legacy Society members, Elsie Burton, Lynn and Richard Corbett, Hunt Green and Jane Picard, Jeanette Shreve, Bill and Dee Jones, Joyce Andrews, Carolyn Hooper and Jay Newman. Welcome, our new Legacy Society members. Thank you for ensuring gifts for our future. Remember, there is a bump up, a 0.5% bump up for charitable gift annuities now through the end of July. But please don't wait till the end of July. I'll be on vacation. Come see me now. We also want to thank those that give enhancements for our property, like the pickleball that was mentioned. That was an anonymous gift. We have some other enhancements in the works. And so if you're looking to do something to make life better for our residents here, please come see me. We thank you so much. Last but not least, save the date for our next cultural endowment event, July 21st. It's a Frankie Valli tribute. Yay! So we'll relive the classic Jersey Boys four-part harmonies and dance moves. Thank you for supporting our cultural endowment. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Karen Olivera, our Director of Housekeeping. Good morning. Great to see you.
Good morning. I have a few updates we've been doing since a month and a half. The houses project with the guys, with the floor techs, doing the baseboards, the blinds and ceiling fans, stuff like that. We going to continue. We going to Carefree Connect after hologs. Please, if everything is not satisfied to you or they're missing stuff, give me a call or email. We can handle with the guys. Also, about pressure washer, we talked to Sean. And we're going to give you update about the pressure washers in the houses. And then we can let you know about the windows cleaning and the screen. Also, with the houses and apartments, is the housekeeper coming? And if something is not right to you, give me a call also. I'm trying to go to at least two houses or apartments every week to check on them and see how they're doing. And we can update it and do the right thing we have to do. And let me know if something, you have a question or they're not doing right, let me know. Or Lori, you can call me at 317 my extension or Lori 228. 317 is mine. And I respond to calls as soon as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Sheri, would you like to come up, our Director of Marketing? Good morning.
Good morning. Wow, it's a packed house out here. That's great. So I wanted to give you an update on our current census and occupancy. Overall, we're at 94.1. That is broken down to 93.9 in independent living, 91.9 in assisted living and 96.6 in health center. So doing pretty well. I wanted to break down some of the vacancies for independent living so you can see where they are in the different neighborhoods. Canopy Oaks, we have two vacancies. Both are committed. Oak South, we have 12 vacancies with three of those committed. Garden Apartment, four vacancies, none committed at this point in time. And in duplexes and single-family homes, we have seven with four committed, possibly another one by the end of this week. So we are chipping away at those. We do have some more upcoming, mostly in Oak South building. So we are working with our home office and a Vice President of Marketing to have an open house for the apartments on July 18th and then for the homes on July 25th. So we're doing a big campaign around those to hopefully get some new people in since right now, most people on our waitlist are kind of settled, not ready to move at this point. So hopefully, to just get some new people in, we're going to have several of these staged so that they look like somebody could just walk right in and move in, just hang their clothes up in the closet. So it gives folks a better idea of what they can do with this space. And typically, our staged apartments or homes typically go pretty quickly. So we're hoping for that. Our goal in marketing is to become 100% occupied. So the way you can help us with that is through our Resident Referral Program. We do feel that you are some of our best marketers. You're the ones who live here. You're day-to-day life here. You want your friends to come and live here. So we have a Resident Referral Program. If you're instrumental in talking with someone and helping them make that decision to move here, you go ahead and claim them and you would be their sponsor. When they move in, you are going to get $200 off of your monthly service fee for one full year as well as the person moving in. So that is really nice savings. It's our gift to you to say thank you for helping us in marketing. And if you are working with someone, please come by and let Tricia or myself know. We'll make sure that gets in your file. And if there's any way we can help you with that, talk to someone, send them materials, anything like that. We'd be happy to do it. So again, thank you and hope you have a good day.
Thank you, Sheri. Thank you so much. Sean Mui, Director of Maintenance, come on up. Morning.
Morning. Hello, all. It's great to see everybody. I have 97 irons in the fire, so I'm just going to pick one and just have a quick discussion about. We recently had an event that kind of was non-event. about, we recently had an event that kind of was non-event, but I just wanted to go over protocols really quick, that if you see something, whether it's on campus or in one of the buildings or anything, and something just seems amiss or something, you know, don't hesitate. Air on the side of caution, hit your pendant, call security, let us come and assess and address. That's what we're here for, and everything. Just, you know, like I said, it's nothing to be scared or anything, we just want to be aware, and we want to make sure that everybody's taken care of. Also, we did have a quick discussion recently in the Maintenance Service Committee meeting about lights being left on in the evenings and everything. We are working on, right now, let's leave the lights on, so that way, you know, for convenience and safety and everything. So if, you know, if you see lights that are normally turned off in the evening and they're on, let's leave them on and see how it goes. With our current LED lighting, you know, energy consumption is minimal and everything, so, you know, don't worry too much about, you know, energy consumption. And I am working on some additional lighting outside for, say, Canopy Oaks over by the poolhouse and everything. Lanny and I have had a discussion about that. But as always, feel free to reach out to me, email, phone call, or in the hallways or whatever, and I will do my very best for you.
Don Chenault, our Fitness Coordinator, come on up. Good morning.
Everybody, good morning. How's it going? So, just real quick today, just wanted to say that we're doing bingo this month, it actually started today, so if you want to get involved, you can come down to the Fitness Center and get a bingo card. It's going to be a summertime-themed bingo, so it's just doing different things, whether it's, you know, coming to more classes, coming to different classes, some healthy habits about maybe just drinking some more water, eating more vegetables. So, I've been told the bingo is maybe a little challenging to do, but if you do the bingo, remember the main thing is that even if it gets you to just come to the gym one more time a week than what you normally go, if it helps you establish one more tiny habit that you haven't been doing, that's the goal of it, to get involved. We are going to be doing a little kind of get-together at the end of it in the poolhouse at the beginning of next month. So if you want to get involved with the bingo, you can come down. It'll be first, second, and third place prizes. We're going to get, we've got a round of golf for two, dinner at Bella Bella, and then another fitness package, and we have some raffle tickets for every, so it's going to be a real fun time this month for bingo. Next month, we're going to be doing a two-week-long cyber cycle challenge. It's going to be between all the Westminster's, so if you are looking for something to get involved with, that's going to be working on your fitness and also help stimulate your brain a little bit with some of the games and riding the cyber cycle. We're going to be doing that next month as well, but those are the two big things that we have going on this month and next month. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Lynn Kimmel, Resident Lifestyle.
Good morning. I see them. I didn't want to walk all the way to the front late and distract from Shannon. So, all right, good morning, happy Monday, and welcome to June. We have a busy month in June. First of all, this Wednesday night, the jazz band that is part of the Capital City Band from TCC is going to be here doing their jazz concert here in the Maguire Center Wednesday night, the 7th, this week. And then following the end of the month, the whole band will be out here on June 30th, which is a Friday night, to do their annual patriotic Fourth of July concert that they normally do for us. Their director is leaving on Sunday morning, the 2nd, flying overseas to direct some, something over there, so she won't be here on the 4th, so they can't perform on the 4th this year. So we're going to do it on Friday night, the 30th, with our firecrackers and salute to the troops and all that stuff, so be sure and mark your calendars for that. But come early, concert's at 7, but come at 6, and we're going to have apple pie and ice cream out here in the foyer before the concert. So be sure and come early, enjoy your apple pie and ice cream, and then the concert will be at 7. Gail, you did mention the second-generation party, so I'm going to mention it. Gail and I are doing a second-generation party. We have a list that is as complete as we are aware of, so we're going to be sending out an official invitation for a second-generation party. That means if your parents lived here, one or both of them, you are a second generation that has made a very wise decision to move out here, and we want to celebrate you. So you're invited to our second-generation party over in the poolhouse at 4:00 in the afternoon. We're going to do a happy hour. We invite you to bring pictures of your parents, and be prepared to share just a real quick memory if you want to. I know we have some parents who are very involved in things. Britt Poulsen's mom was our, once upon a time, a Resident Council President years ago, Ms. Aileen Poulsen. I remember her well. So those are just the kind of things we want to know. So we invite you to mark your calendars and be sure and come to that, bring pictures. It's amazing how many second generations recognize, "My mom ate lunch with your momma. I had lunch with her one time out here with my momma." We've had that happen about three times, so it's cool to make that connection, so the picture helps. Scavenger hunt, Tuesday morning, June 13th, we're going to kick off our scavenger hunt. We're going to meet in the pub at 10:00, and I'm going to give you a list of things to go find that are all things dad. Some of the things on this list you may not find on campus. You may have to go down to Bass Pro and hold up whatever it is and take a picture of it and come back. And when we did this last time, it took about three, two days, two or three days to get, and I'm going to tell you all something, Beverly Booth is fierce at this. She won before she and her team, they split the list up, divided and conquered, and had it done pretty quick. So, but I need pictures of you holding it, not something printed off the internet, okay? Pictures of you holding it, bring them back, on your cameras, fine. And the winners, the winning team of four will go to lunch at the Wharf. So come Tuesday morning, the 13th. The whole team doesn't have to come, only one from the team can come and represent if they want to. I don't care if everybody comes, doesn't matter to me. But 10:00 in the pub on Tuesday morning, the 13th, and pick up your list of items that are going to be on your all-things-dad scavenger hunt, okay? All right, then, on that same day, at 11:30, we're doing beer and brats for the boys, ladies, for the boys, okay? We're going to let this be the man event. All right, it was, and the wow that you got online in the email, it said Thursday, the 15th. After that was sent out, Carolyn and I chatted, and we needed to move it to Tuesday. The printed copy has the correct date, but I changed it before we ran the copy, okay? So what you got online, the date is two days off, so it is the 13th, June 13th, Tuesday. All right, but we are going to lunch down at the coast this Thursday. We're going to go down to Riverside Cafe and have lunch down there on the water. You can take time to walk and look at the boats, walk along the water. There's a parkway at the end of the road down there, we walk down there if you want to. So if you want to go to that, be sure and sign up, it is Dutch treat, everybody pay for their own, okay? And Gail did the art show. I think that's all I had. Okay, questions, comments, concerns? Nope? Go make it a great day.
I got it. I got it. Thank you. Kelly Skiva, come on up. Good morning. How is Volunteer Services? Great to see you. Awesome.
Well, good morning, everyone, and happy summer. First thing I'd like to do is tell you that we are really, really honored to have a couple of students here from FAMU who are healthcare management majors. Would you like to stand up? This is Saraje Johnson and Anaya Wilson. Anaya is from Tampa, and Saraje's from South Carolina. They are both here for the next few weeks. They're going to spend times with each of our department heads and each of our units and learning a whole lot about how this organization runs and learning more about healthcare administration. So we're really excited to have them here with us. Second of all, I also wanted to recognize, one of our residents has recently been recognized by the Tallahassee Senior Foundation, Jill Sandler. Are you here? She was select honored as one of their Silver Stars. Is she here? Stand up. Maybe she's not here. Well, if you see her, congratulate her. She is the latest honoree, and they recognize individuals who have made a positive impact in the community since turning age 60. Now, we have had a number of residents over the years distinguished with this honor, including Chuck Lee, Emily Millett, Charles Namm, Everett Yarborough, Judy Westbrook, and Marjorie Turnbull. So if you see Ms. Jill, congratulate her. Also, I wanted to let you know that Second Harvest of the Big Ben, because June 19th is a holiday, that we moved our food packing to the 20th, so it's on Tuesday, the 20th, buses leave the Perry Center at 9:30. So if you'd like to join us, please let me know. You can sign up on my W Life, or just go ahead and send me an email, let me know, we'd love to have you come. And also, we are going to have a volunteer meeting on July 19th at 10:00 a.m. We're going to talk about some new opportunities that are available, and we have the Director of Volunteers for Leon County Schools, Ms. Kelly Walker is going to be joining us, and we're going to talk about the upcoming school year and how our residents can get more involved in the schools, including WT Moore across the street. So if you're interested in coming, we'd love to see you there. It'll be in the next wow, but I wanted to give you a heads up to mark your calendar for July 19th at 10:00 a.m. in the theater, and we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we're thrilled to have you both, so I hope you enjoy your time here. All right. Carolyn Francis, Director of Dining Services. No Walker today.
No, no Walker.
No Walker.
No stairs either.
No stairs either, okay.
Good morning, everybody. I just had a couple things. This Friday afternoon at 2:00, can we get together, have a dining chat, and I'll get Paul and Al to make some cookies and punch and stuff? I got a lot to go over.
That's our art show.
Oh. How about Thursday at 2:00? Well, there's a couple. I'm not going to make everybody happy, so Thursday at 2:00, we're going to do a dining chat in the dining room. I got a lot to go over. The most important of which is, we've got a dining event calendar, which is going to be all the events that Dining Services is going to do, and this month is, we're going to ramp back up to our normal level of doing fun things. So I've got a lot of things to tell you about that I don't want to take all the time here to do, so it'd be great if Thursday at 2:00, we could get together and do that. I'll also, at that time, have the Father's Day menu and signup sheet up for anyone who's going to join us on Father's Day, okay? So if, does anyone have any questions that can't wait until that dining chat, just for the sake of time, okay? So... No, we're going to have it right in the dining room, right in the dining room. That way, I know that that room's available, okay? So the main dining room, 2:00 on Thursday, and we'll go over all this stuff, I'll have copies of the calendar you can all refer to. On that calendar also will be the daily lunch, the lunch special on Tuesday in the dining room, and the dinner special that will be Thursdays in the dining room. Those will all be laid out, so you can plan on that, that looks like something that you'd want to do. So we'll give you that calendar, I'll show you how it works, and I'll answer any questions about anything you have then, okay? All right, have a great week.
Thank you. And Peggy is not back yet, from California. So she's another week out, but we're still doing wellness visits, and I just asked that you participate in those wellness visits. All of that is in an effort, excuse me, to gear up for hurricane season and for us to be prepared for you. We would like to, for you to share your information, please update your face sheets, and let us make sure that we have all the latest data and information during those wellness checks. So I just wanted to add that quickly to our remarks. So a couple things I wanted to share with you today is, Patsy Kicklider left me this note, and I want to share some of this information, statistics for Monday Night Music with you. So just from September 22 to May 22 of '23, we've had 25 programs for Monday Night Music, over 670 students from FSU FAMU and Leon High School, along with others, for a total of 742 people who have participated in Monday Night Music, bringing Monday Night Music, 24 professors, and the counted number of residents in attendance was 3,188, which is just amazing. Four concerts have been by the Westminster Oak Singers. Residents in attendance of that is 700. So total resident attendance in these programs is 3,888, which is amazing. So it's definitely a beneficial program, Monday Night Music as well as the Westminster Oak Singers.
Shannon, I just heard somebody behind me say it's worth it.
It's worth it, thank you. I agree with you so much. So a couple things I'd like to update you on. So we're expecting new furniture in the Health Center next week for the second floor of the Health Center. Second floor's not been updated, that I know of, ever. So it's way overdue for new furniture, and it's going to look lovely. It's had, it's had new flooring, but it's not had updated furniture. So if you see a big truck and people and they're assembling furniture and all of that, that is going to be second-floor Health Center new furniture. Don't know if you were able to participate in the Wall of Honor furniture dedication, but I thought it was a lovely ceremony, and I want to thank Gail and Jeff McQuades. And also, Southern Staging. Southern Staging is the group that we hired to purchase the furniture, to find it for us. And we use that particular company to stage our homes, so they do a very, very good job. They also brought in a lot of the items for the Memory Care Building as well. So if you like how Memory Care was furnished, they helped with that. So please keep bringing in your legendary nominations. I have a couple of letters to read to you later, but we had 86 of our team members nominated for some type of legendary award just this last month. 86, not this last year, but this last month. So many of you, as well as our other staff members and family members, send in very, very kind letters about the service that they experienced. So I just want to say thank you for sharing your stories. Rooftop garden furniture is in place. We are obtaining umbrellas so that you can use it, so it should be ready within the next two weeks for everybody to enjoy. This month in Orlando, on the 21st and 22nd, we're going to be recognizing Al and Darlene Oosterhoff as our Legendary Volunteers of the Year. And our Team Member of the Year, of course, is Radiance Abdul-Khadr. So we're going to be recognizing all of them in the same ceremony, and I hope you have a wonderful time when you go. So also, a special thanks to Gail Alexander and the Foundation for being willing to help us purchase a new dance floor for Maguire, yes. So we're going to get a new dance floor, we've not ordered it yet, but we think about twice the size of the one we have, so we'll have a nice big dance floor for you for your endowment and other events. So June 7th, please make sure to join us from 2:00 to 4:00 on the third floor of the Perry Center, that's newly renovated. We'll have some rooms open for you and some common areas. Hope you come and see what the third floor looks like now. It's really a beautiful space. Carpet has been selected for the second-floor Perry Center, so they will get carpet for the first time in 25 years. Yeah, that's overdue as well, so we're very excited about that. Quality of Life Survey results are going to be posted on my W Life, so you'll see those there, that's per resident request. And also, just wanted to share with you why, if you see people walking around that have these little green badges on, we gave these out... we gave these out to our team members last month in our Team Member Town Meeting. I don't know if you know, we have Team Member Town Meetings also. And so this is a letter. There's also a handwritten letter, hand typed letter, stating that we're essential workers so that during hurricane season, if there are blocked roads, any barrier to coming into Westminster Oaks, that we have information available to share with anybody, sheriff's deputies, anybody to let them know that we need to come to work to make sure that we can care for our residents. So that's part of our preparation. We'll share more of our preparation at our quarterly town meeting, which will be our next meeting here in Maguire Center. We'll also be discussing financials, so that'll be part of the agenda. So we'll have a financial discussion. We will then discuss hurricane preparedness, what you need to know. Beverly Booth and I will be doing that jointly during that meeting. So I appreciate Beverly and all the thought and time that she's put into her presentation. We're also going to be replacing the flooring in front of the chapel area. You may have noticed some places that have... Yes, I see heads nodding, that are worn, that have holes in them. Looks like something's happening right there under the flooring. So as soon as we have that scheduled to be done, it's already been chosen, we'll let you know. We'll put that in our memo. Not sure if you were aware of Dr. Gales Felton's 100th birthday, yes? So Westminster was represented there. We had a couple of tables. She was honored at that time and just a beautiful, beautiful occasion. Some of the staff went. We're invited to go, which was very, very kind of her. And I know that residents were there as well. So if you see Dr. Gales Felton, please, please tell her that she is a valued member of our community and has contributed greatly to Florida A&amp;M. Westminster Oaks has also been nominated for the Reader's Choice Awards as well as Best of Tallahassee Assisted Living. I know some of you may have voted for us. I appreciate that. And so just several ways in which Westminster Oaks is recognized by the community. Wanted to share some really kind notes that some of you have sent. So one is, "We're fortunate to have two outstanding nurses on our staff, Marie Washington and Heather Bodison." This came from Assisted Living. Received another note, "It's been a while since we wrote and thanked you for everything you do. You're an asset to Westminster Oaks." This was sent to Karen Olivera. It wasn't to me. Karen Olivera? "In the five years we've lived here, you continue to provide us with professional, courteous, timely service as Director of Housekeeping." Thank you so much. Larry Sangalang came over to our apartment this morning to install some security rails in our master bathroom. Larry did such a wonderful job. He's an affable young man, meticulous, efficient, very knowledgeable. Larry took his time to get the job done. So yet another kind word about Larry. Just wanted to give a shout out for great service I received from Peggy and Brenda in our clinic when I was diagnosed with COVID last month. The caring concern that was shown to me just solidifies that I made a good decision to come to Westminster Oaks. This came from a team member. "I just got off the phone with Ms. Bobby Jean Jones' daughter, who was full of compliments to her mother's care and the way that the staff was kind and friendly to her when she visits. She is extremely pleased with everything about Westminster Oaks. Well done." And then another one about Larry. "Larry just left and wanted you all to know how super impressed I am with his keen skills, problem-solving, and knowledge. Amazing, and he's extremely polite as well. Westminster Oaks is so very lucky and blessed to have him on staff." And yes, I put that in his personnel file, and he'll get a legendary nomination. "Hi, Sean. Handling our Friday afternoon AC issue was prompt and efficient. The system was up and running before noon today, Monday. Thank you so much." "My recent stay in the Health Center was my first. Everyone was supportive and made a speedy recovery. It is a great facility with great staff." That was nice. And then Christopher helped moving the mat under a large elliptical arbiter. "He was prompt, courteous, efficient, and strong. Thanks for sending him over." So these are some of the notes, letters, emails that I receive from people, and I just wanted to say thank you and keep them coming. And we, of course, put them in people's personnel file of our staff, and we also put them in for a legendary nomination on your behalf. So are there any questions I can answer for you, and I will do my best? Lynn has a microphone. Right back here.
I just want to say maybe several of you noticed that Gracie had surgery back in April 26. It's a surgery where they work on her Achilles tendon. Now, recovery, you know, is an extreme challenge. So when she finished her surgery, she came to the Beltran Health Center. And I wanted to say that she received there such an excellent care that is hard for me to describe. So we were talking at Beltran having two stars. I give six stars.
Lynn, would you recognize our newest team member back here for...
Sure. Chris, wave your microphone to everybody. He is Dakota's new assistant. He's learning all the ropes to help Dakota in the sound room back here. Wave, Chris. Yay. And Chris, you know, I have to apologize. I don't even know your last name. Anderson, that's a nice, easy name to remember. Chris Anderson. It's Scottish, he says. Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chris. All right, any other... thank you again for those comments. Any other questions? I'll try to help answer. We're going to get out early today. It's only 10:58. 10:58, wow. All right. I hope you have a wonderful June. Looks like we have a packed calendar. Lots going on. You take care. Bye-bye.